All right, Madam Mayor, good afternoon.
Right, good afternoon, Madam Clerk. Okay, we're gonna kick off the Reno City Council meeting. Thank you for everyone sticking with us. We had a delay this morning, but it was very well worth it. It was great. We had the Academy graduates today. That was impressive. And the valedictorian was our, one of our very own fire, Katie Walker, right? And she was one of our very own firefighters. That was so cool. Yay. So anyway, so thank you for being here. So just for the record, Madam Clerk, it's the Reno City Council meeting for Wednesday, June 1st. Can you believe sorry, June? So we are gonna start out with the Pledge Allegiance, and before we do that, I would love, I have several future mayors in the audience from Sager's School. Yes, I have to call you all out because one day you're gonna take these jobs and you're gonna sit here. And by the way, heard Vice Mayor gave you a little lesson in governmental process up here at the dais, is that true?
They did great.
Okay.
Mayor did fantastic, and they burned the question.
I love it. That is fantastic. And I think Allison Gorlick arranged all of this, so I want to say thank you so much to Allison. But I would love it if you would all lead us in the Pledge Allegiance of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great job. Madam Clerk, gonna send it right back to you for item A2, roll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Roll call today, Councilmember Breckus.
Here.
Dour.
Here.
Delgado.
Weber.
Jarden.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Shevy.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right, thank you so much. So then, I'm gonna send it right back to you for item A3, but before we do that, I don't know if everyone has noticed, but we are wearing these adorable t-shirts today. And we would love it if Bubba would stand up in your honor because today is National Bubba Day. Oh, is it tomorrow?
Yeah.
Oh, we're gonna do it today. We're gonna give you two days, just to make sure we embarrass you even more. And she hates it, but we love to do it to her. But she's an amazing, amazing person. I've had the honor to work with you for so long, and this is how well-loved you are at City Hall, so, yay. Congratulations. Okay, sending it, I'm gonna, and then, we've got Jackie. Oh, Jackie.
She's, I think, on my.
Jackie, we.
Will you move?
Your birthday.
Hiding out.
She's hiding out. Her birthday was on May 30th.
Oh, she knows.
And anyone that knows me, I love to just embarrass people, right? Well, Jackie, happy birthday, if you can hear us. I know you're not in the audience, but if you're somewhere in that land, happy birthday from all of us. We'll get you later. We'll bring you a cake later and send you a happy birthday. We won't forget.
We won't.
We won't. All right, now, moving right back to you, Madam Clerk, item A3.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first item today is public comment. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Please note that the council may not take action upon any matter not agendized. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you're attending in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Mornings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. Our first public commenter today is Beth McMillan, followed by Jason Mayroff, followed by George Campione.
Beth McMillan, Executive Director of our town for the record. I'm not gonna speak because I'm showing you a video of what's coming in one month. Our town is back. We're downtown, around town, all around the region. And we've added two big venues. One is the University Quad, one is Idlewild, two our events this year. And you will note in the video our special attention to diversity and gender equality. Go.
I love it. That's great. All right, looks like another amazing year.
Yeah, and I forgot to thank you all for your generous support, and I just wanted to make sure we got this in under three minutes. So in exactly a month, we'll all be in Wingfield Park again, and it's just so exciting for all of us. So thank you very much for all your support, and we'll see you in July.
I know, it's so exciting. Finally. All right, thank you.
Jason Mayroff, followed by George Campione, followed by Terry Brooks.
Hi, I'm Jason Mayroff. I've been bicycling around Reno for the last 40 years of my life, and so I'm very thankful for the bike lanes that the city is constructing around downtown Reno. I currently live in Golden Valley, just outside of Ward 4, and one of my favorite things to do is to bicycle down North Virginia Street. Okay. As you can see from the photos I brought in, well, first of all, as you know, North Virginia Street has a history of pedestrian fatalities. So I think I can speak for a lot of the folks who bicycle and run in, from the North Valleys down North Virginia. Often see people walking down North Virginia. Personally, you know, it's one of my favorite bicycle rides. I can get up to almost the speed limit, about 40 miles an hour. However, as you can see, this is, this is just past the 711, near the corner of Wellington. And as you can see, there's, there's very little space for a bicyclist to bicycle. There's, there's obviously plenty of room for a bicycle lane to be constructed. This, this is further down near the Bonanza Casino, and as you can see, there's a sidewalk that's covered in gravel, and then very little space for a bicycle. So it's, you know, it's exciting, and I'm always nervous when I ride down, down this, down this road. But as you can see, there's, there's a lot of space for bicycle lanes. There's one more photo I wanted to show you. This is on the uphill from downtown, near the Bonanza Casino, and there's enough space for a bicycle lane. But the problem here is that there's a lot of gravel, and often broken glass and nails which fall off construction trucks and the like, and so it's easy to get a flat tire. So I like to ride, actually on the travel lane, which is inherently dangerous. So my, what I'm advocating for today is that the city of Reno considers extending the bicycle lanes up to North Virginia. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Could I ask if Amy will check in with him? I also know that some of the places that he's talked about, there's the ramp with a guard, guard rail around that area, and that's a really dangerous intersection anyway, so we have to be really careful on that.
Yeah.
But we do need that.
Yeah.
And so I appreciate hearing that and getting more information with RTC.
Here at the city, we're putting together a bike board here at the city, and it'd be good for you to serve on it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good times. We went to school together. Reno's so small, I love it.
And his dad was a principal, right?
And his dad was a principal. Yeah. Okay, Madam Clerk, sending it back to you.
Thank you. George Campione, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Carlos Cadiante.
Again, my name is George Campione, and my address is 501 West Forest Street, Unit 418 Reno, Nevada 89503, for right now, not soon, hopefully. What I'd like to begin with is for everybody that wants to know about the council and Jacob's Entertainment, please go to propublica.org, do a search for Jacob's Entertainment, and then look for an article on "He Tore Down," and that's all you have to look for. And that will explain everything. Anyway, I was here a couple of times. First, you heard me on the phone comment about Jacob's Entertainment. Then I came in concerning Renters' Right, and last week I was in here about public safety. I've seen several commercials, interviews, TV, whatever, during the weekend over the last three months. Miss, Madam Mayor has an advertisement saying she's concerned about public safety. But guess what? Nothing has been done to address what I brought up last month, just last week. In fact, what I'd like to show you is a reduction. This is 2021 budget, which I, I can't get a hold of the 2022. Delinquent license penalties went from $954,000, okay, ending 2020, to $800,000, final approved. Why did we take a decrease when there has been an increase in not only licensed delinquents, but also they're running around with no license plate? I mean, quite obvious. And I have a video of a police officer driving right past the vehicles that I showed you last week. The same vehicle sits there. I've gotta move on. Next, next thing I have to say is Jenny Breckus. She has, she was interviewed saying, "Well, if she gets away with it, why don't I? Why can't I?" That's the wrong attitude to take, especially when you want to become a mayor, all right? That is the reason why we have this public safety issue. Everybody's saying, "If they can not license their vehicle, why don't, why can't I get away with it?" And in fact, everybody is allowing this. And by the way, by them not licensing it, they no longer have to be concerned about insuring it either. So if I get hit, I want you all to be on call because I will be issuing a civil suit against the city, okay? And then Councilwoman Jordan here announced how they were, had this turnkey residential down a Highway 60 motel, right? They have one right over here at the courtyard, but it's too expensive, at $3 million, and it's in Moth Falls. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Terry Brooks, followed by Carlos Cadiante, followed by Colleen Westlake.
Good afternoon. It's me, Terry Brooks again, and today I'd like to address following the money to food when it comes to homelessness. It used to be that most food came from small family farms, but many of them have been taken over by large corporate enterprise farms. People on small family farms ate food that they had grown on their own personal farms on land that they would own. Farms that grow a lot of food, that is then for sale, now have to sell it for prices that are wholesale. The large corporate farms seem to set the price for all the small farms that sell it for that price. The large corporate farms have developed a process where they make more money while the small farms make less. So most of the money can be followed to such a large corporation. To make money is the goal of such an organization. And in order to carry out such an operation, because they have the power and money, they can use manipulation. They have access to all kinds of nationwide transportation and have access to all kinds of national communication. With all of that considered, it is no surprise that under their control, the price of foods will rise. But if you are homeless, you have no garden for food. And if you are unemployed, you have no money for food. So with all of that in mind, I can't help but conclude that the money is followed to the rich when it comes to food. Who doesn't act with greed? So I would like to thank everyone who doesn't act with greed, but instead helps to feed those who are in need. And I would like to thank you all for listening to me today. And since this meeting was two hours later than usual, I'm feeling kinda hungry, by the way. Just kidding.
I love it. I love it. Did you guys enjoy that? Right? Good. Thanks, Terry. Good job.
Carlos Cadiante, followed by Colleen Westlake, followed by Jeff Church.
My name is Carlos Cadiante. My address is 1781 Edes Street in Reno, Nevada 89509. I'm here today due to an event that happened to me on May 3rd. What preceded that was a property boundary dispute, of which I am winning the case now relative to that, but it cost me $80,000 to get to that point. The adjacent neighbor in this issue had called the police using malicious prosecution against me. I have never been arrested in my life. I'm a state-certified firefighter, State of Alaska, all three levels, 1, 2, 3, intermediate level EMT, and assistant flight medic. Served as a communication officer for the city of Juneau. Fire department, transferred over to the police department for the last 13 years before I retired. Worked for the federal police with a top-secret security clearance, optimizing systems, and encryption, and had a top-secret security clearance, like I said. Never been arrested in my life. May 3rd evening, after the server, process server served my neighbors, they called the police, who came shortly thereafter, asked me to come out. I says, "I'm not doing anything. I'm not making any noise. There's no generator. There's no compressor. There's no music. The windows are closed. The doors are closed." I came out in compliance to sign a citation, as I was asked to do. As I got out of my garage entry, I was grabbed by the wrist, spun down. A 200-pound cop landed on my back. A field-training Officer Zint threw me down, put a George Floyd knee behind my neck, tore my rotator cuff, dislocated a ligament in my right elbow, made me defecate my pants. I had to sit in that for five hours through booking in a cell with injuries to my back, of which the medical injuries are, cost me $30,000, including advanced imaging at St. Mary's for $15,000 MRI. I would like to edify you that I tried to go through Internal Affairs, called their number many times after, left voicemails. Nobody called back. Finally, a year after, they have a year statute of limitations for process control, excuse me, not process control, but through their process. Though the point being, they're inaccessible. Internal Affairs is inaccessible. I went up today with a nice gentleman that got me in, and I got this brochure that shows the address and the phone number and the process. I went through all of that. But it's pretty disheartening to get severely beaten and then ended up with no recourse, no accessibility to the system at Internal Affairs. That needs to change. Plus, the level of which, you know, there's use-of-force policies, holds, et cetera, that should be revisited relative to police brutality, I'll call it. And the point also is, I tried to get with the city clerk to get the next meeting relative to public safety so I could attend it, and I still have not, not get that information. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Carlos. I appreciate that. Can I get someone from our staff to meet with him and make sure you give him all the information? Thank you so much. Nick is gonna meet with you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Colleen Westlake, followed by Jeff Church, followed by Kai Plaskin.
I like your glasses.
Thank you.
They're super cute.
Do I wait till she comes back?
No, I think she has to step out.
This does pertain to her a little bit. Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Colleen Westlake. I am running for Washoe County School Board, District B in Sparks. I live in Sparks, 1685 Winterwood Avenue in Sparks. I am a fifth-generation Navadan, a proud fifth-generation Navadan. I'm a mother of three, and by November, a grandmother of seven, and I have grave concerns regarding our education system. It's important that we are putting out quality, educated individuals. We want to build our economy. We want to attract businesses to our state. And with the SEL platform that they are using right now, and I encourage all of you, please do your research on it. There are studies out there that's saying it's helping to improve children's retention, behavior, everything else. I'm here to tell you it's the exact opposite. Alcoholism, drug use is up. Absenteeism is through the roof. Fighting in classrooms, not out on the playground, but in the classroom, assaulting teachers. All of this has increased since they have put SEL into place, yet we are spending tens of thousands of thousands of thousands of dollars for something that is basically an experiment. My other issue is with Ms. Jardon. She put out an email saying that myself and other candidates that are vying to obtain a position and try and make valid changes and get our education back to basics so that our children are not graduating at 80% with 46% literacy and only 28% math competent. Think about that. Think about the workforce that we are going to have in the next few years. They can't make change. They can't read a tape measure. These are important things, you guys. If we don't have educated workforce, we cannot build our economy and our community will die. Ms. Jardon called myself and others extremists funded by an out-of-state blowhard that thinks he can buy our elections. I have not received one penny from Robert Beatles, not one penny. He has lived here two years, and I, I'm not here to defend him. I'm just stating some facts. Lived here two years. He's a property owner. Is it okay for people to come here and support our community, invest in our community, and will take their money, and that's good? I think that's very self-absorbing because if they want to get involved in our politics, then all of a sudden, they're a blowhard, and they're not supposed to have a say. I think that is hypocritical, and I have a list of Ms. Jardon's donators.
All right. Thank you so much.
A lot of out-of-town.
Thank you so much.
Jeff Church, followed by Kai Plaskin.
Good afternoon, folks. Long time no see. It's a pleasure to be here and to see you all again, except Ms. Jardon stepped out of the room. I am Jeff Church. Views expressed today are mine. And I just want to talk about the nexus between the school district and education in the city of Reno. We want a qualified workforce. We want to be able to attract good tech business to Reno, and most of the schools in Marshall County School District are in the city of Reno. On this handout right here, if we could possibly get that, that's a study from Battleborn Moms, and I've only got the executive summary for you, and I beg you to read it. It's only two pages long. And they're a very well-respected nonprofit. They're not radical. They're not extremists. They're very good in what they do, so please take a look at that. I did give handouts to that, to you. So how are we doing on education? This is Nevada ACT scores, and as you can see, in 2014, we were above the national average. We plummeted. We've plummeted year after year below the national average. So then you ask, "Well, how are we doing nationally? How do we compare to Mississippi and some of those others?" There's Nevada right there, and it's not in the order of how we do. It's last in the nation. We are below Mississippi. Nevada is last in the nation in ACTs. So you say, "Well, you know, that's Nevada. That's not Washoe County." Here we have Washoe County. We are below the state average, 17-4. That's worst, you know, 17-8 is the state. We're 17-4. We've got to do better on our workforce. We've got to do better on education. The next one should really cause whiplash. 13% college-ready, 87% not college-ready. This is right from the Washoe County School District site. This is not something that some extremist group made up. This is Washoe County statistics. So you say, "Well, that doesn't really matter because that's only ACT scores." I could do a whole 20-minute presentation that I have on how bad we are, but look at this one. 12 out of 17 for graduation rates. We got beat by almost everybody. We get beat by Lander County. No, we beat, yeah, we got beat by White Pine. You really can't, you just can't put a good picture on this. Now, this one might be a little bit offensive. This is fourth-grade proposed education, fourth grade. Can't we let kids be kids? To me, that's pornography. Fourth grade. This is proposed for the SHARE program. Coming up, the next meeting is June 13th at 5:30 PM, and they've, they've changed the name from Boys and Girls. It's hard to read. It's hard even for me to look at that. Body with a vulva. Body with a penis. That's what we're teaching our kids while we're last in the nation. Now, again, I could go on and on, but I just want to point out that you folks, your statesmen, your leaders in the community, I urge you to support quality education. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Church, if you can provide us copies of your documentation, that would be great. Kai Plaskin.
Hi, Kai Plaskin with the Trucking Meadows Bicycle Alliance. I didn't realize you could bring in pictures and stick them underneath here. I would have brought in pictures of families riding their bikes downtown Reno, you know, little kids and, and parents. It's really an amazing transformation that's immediate. And so I kinda wanted to give you kudos on that. A show of hands, how many of you plan to ride it or have ridden it? One, two, three, four, five, five, six? Okay, all right. I see a nod from.
5:30 in the morning.
Excellent. I was just riding in Sacramento, and they have nothing like that. Like, it's really, we can showcase to mayors from around the nation what we've done here when they all come to town pretty soon and say, "Hey, look, you know, this is amazing. It's a great transformation for downtown." There are a couple of challenges with it, and I'll talk about that in just a second, but the, you know, we heard from Jason, who was talking about a new bike lane, and I think it's really important to examine how we have developed bike lanes, and that this is partially an example, is that this weekend, it will close, for instance. And that's technically a bike lane ends. And I've been down here every day riding around town and looking for these bike lane end signs. And in some cases, they don't exist where a bike lane does end. And so if we're gonna put in new bike lanes, we need to make sure that they're connected. I just wanted to give you an analogy really quickly. It's putting up a bike lane sign and inviting It's putting up a bike lane sign and inviting people to ride on it and then closing it or having it end is like inviting people into a pit of alligators. It's like, hey, come on, it's safe, let's go. And then suddenly, a family and their kids are out there fending for themselves with massive, heavy, dangerous vehicles. And so many of you wonder, well, why don't more people ride? That's the reason why we've got, we don't even know how many of these bike lane end signs exist throughout the county, but there are tons of them within, probably a quarter mile of here, there's at least six that I've counted. I keep sending them to Reno Direct, and that's going to be a big effort for us over the next year or so. Talking about the next RTC board member, I think it's really important to talk about your experience of safety and your dedication to safety, as well as possibly a micromodal budget. You may have not have known that RTC doesn't have a dedicated micromodal budget, and if we're going to request funds from RTC for micromodal, should we really have to go with a special request every time? Or should even a small amount of funds be specifically dedicated for micromodal? So candidates who would like to be on that board, I'd like you to talk about, you know, what's your record of safety and will you support a micromodal budget, specific budget, not lumped in with ADA, because ADA will win every time, and it's really important. So I think with that, Trucking Meadows Bicycle Alliance would also like to offer to ride anybody downtown on the bike lanes who doesn't have a whole lot of experience. We have a tandem.
You can go in the tandem.
And you can jump on the back, yeah, and we can ride you down with all of our experience and show it to you. So thank you.
I love it. And thank you so much for recognizing the hard work from Kari Kosky. Really, she is the rock star behind it and really made it possible. We know it's work in progress, and it's going to get better and better as we evolve, but we needed to start somewhere, and also it was important to prove that people want to ride their bikes, and I want to be safe on my bike, and there's a lot of times I don't ride, and I want it to be a city that really welcomes new bike infrastructure. And I think to your point, I think it's a great idea to have a micromobility budget. It's really smart. So, good job. Thank you so much. And Kari, wherever, are you over there? I don't know if she is. Oh, there she is. Rock star, love you. Amazing. We couldn't do this without you. So thank you for recognizing her. Super important.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With that, we have no additional public comment.
Wait. Come on. One of you?
Nobody.
You want to sign in for public comment and come on up? Come on. You can do it. Come on. Yes, you got it. You got it. We're rooting you on up here.
You got a mayor?
Yes. Future mayor, you can do it. Why don't you just come up and tell us about your experience today? Tell us what you thought. Maybe that's easiest. We'll get you signed in after. So come on up.
Um, is it on? Hello? Oh, Maris. Maris Davis. I'm a ninth grader from Sage Ridge High School, and, oh, not high school, wait, I don't know. And for me, I think the experience today was very, very interesting, and it shows a lot about political structure and overall how you guys handle the city and overall how you do your job, and you care and you show all this like attentive care and listen, and you actually like acknowledge people's opinions and you care a lot about the citizens and all of their like needs and requirements and all of their overall like experiences that they've gone through and how you want to help with that and how you want to improve the best you can with like society as it is.
Yeah, and let me just say, really, it's not us up here, it's all of these guys over there. They make the city amazing, and they have to do all the hard work, and then we get to come up here and take credit for it. So I just want to be really honest and transparent about that. But thank you so much for being here, and I really hope that it inspires you all to run for office. I want to see future mayors out there. You are our future, right? So we got to keep telling you early and often that you can do it and that you're going to inspire all of us. So anytime you want to come back, you can sit right here. I got a gavel for you. And I never use the gavel. I don't like to use the gavel. I don't like it. This one uses it here and there, but I don't like the gavel, but anytime, anytime. Well, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, good job, you guys. Come on up.
It's quite nerve-wracking. Hi, I'm Scarlett Piccolo. I'm from Sage Ridge School. I'm in ninth grade, going into 10th grade. My concern is with the programs that help people concerning, or programs that are there and put in place for people with mental health issues or people in need of an actual, I guess, just a good base system and support system, that way they can kind of fall back onto it. I know that there was something, I mentioned once, talking about 988, which is a system put in place in order to, instead of calling 911 if you need help with substance abuse, you can call 988. I think that systems like that should be put in place a lot more because I know that that's such a problem nowadays, especially coming out of pandemic, having that problem where students and kids and adults even, you know, I know that there was a rise and an increase. I read in an article that there was an increase in substance abuse, you know, alcohol, drugs, right? And you even have absences during school. That kind of stuff is a big, big problem. And so to me, I think that the most important thing is having a good support system for people to fall back on, mainly because if a student or an adult or a child or anyone in that case has struggles, they can fall back onto it, right? I think 988 is a great opportunity for you guys to do that, and so I think even acting on that a bit more or having an idea where you can really, I guess, just kind of set that in place. Sorry, I know that I'm rambling, but yes.
No, I love it.
That would be really good. Yeah, so, thank you.
Good job. You know what? I would love for JW to come down and tell you what we're doing in the space of mental health and think about this. She's in ninth grade talking about mental health. You know how important that is now more than ever to be talking about it because guess what it does? It lifts the stigma of talking about it. So the more you guys talk about it with your friends, the better off we'll all be able to feel like we can talk about it and express, you know, how we feel about mental health. It's one of the biggest initiatives that we're working on in the city, and it's so, so important. So thank you so much. That was very brave of you, very brave. Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. They were all very, very impressive as they sat up here and asked questions. It was, it was, it was great to hear the questions, and a lot of it did center around mental health issues and just issues about our community, which were super important. I wanted to let you know, for those of you that came up and spoke, and some of you sitting in the chairs right there, when you're done here and our meeting is done, we post a video of a recording of this meeting, so you can go to Reno.gov and you'll be able to watch yourselves in the conversations we just had, just so you know. It's Reno.gov.
Okay, Madam Clerk, sending it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With that, we have no additional live public comment. We have none registered in the Zoom meeting. It should be noted for the record, I apologize, I have to click. Sorry. It should be noted for the record that we did receive correspondence related to item A3 not directly associated with an agenda item today prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, May 31st. There were two letters of support, five concerned letters, and there was a voicemail. However, due to vulgar language, we will not be able to play that today, but the transcript has been included in the permanent record and distributed to the Reno City Council. So with that, we are moving on to item A4, approval of the agenda.
All right. Madam Clerk, before we do that, one of the things that I want to start doing, I think it would be helpful to move our meetings along, whether you have someone maybe online, but someone here in the gallery, by taking some of those items so that we can get them in and out, because I know that their day needs to get started. So if we can just sort of check the temperature of everyone in the room, what items they are here for, so that would be great. I'm just going to keep putting it on your radar.
So I can tell you, we have some members in the room who are only here for the B items today, so depending on if those get pulled, then we should be all set.
Perfect. Okay. At this time, then, I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Item A5, approval of the minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. We're heading to item B, consent agenda. Madam Clerk, any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, we have none registered. However, we did receive some correspondence on this item, one letter of concern, and we have no additional public comment today.
Okay, thank you so much. So at this time, I'm going to start to the left of me. Councilwoman Weber, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
I do not.
All right. Councilwoman Duer.
No.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Councilwoman Delgado? Councilwoman Reese?
No, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Breckus?
No.
All right.
Move to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good job. Okay, Madam Clerk, sending it right back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moving on to item D1, which is a presentation and discussion or potential direction to staff about sewer capacity allocation program.
All right. We have the one and only Mr. Flansburgh coming up. At this time, Madam Clerk, any public comments?
Madam Mayor, we have not received any public comment nor any correspondence related to this item.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you very much. For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works, sporting proudly my National Bubba Day T-shirt. So on the Rizworth capacity, we've talked about our sewer capacity at the Reno Stead Plant. We received direction from council. I just point to this picture here as one of the recent photo updates of the work that's going on as part of the expansion that will be completed later this year. In the August 2019 Reno City Council meeting, we did receive specific direction to proceed with the 2 million, from 2 to 4 million gallon expansion project. We were also directed that they wanted to use the half million flow shade primarily for reducing water going to Swan Lake. We were also asked to return to council recommendations on the sewer allocation program, which we have done previously, and we have an update today. We were asked to look at our stormwater retention requirements and changing those from 1 to 1 to 1.3 to 1, which has been completed. And then we were asked to proceed with projects with the primary goal of reducing the water levels at Swan Lake. Those specific items at that point referred to the reservoir, the Red Rock Reservoir was a feasibility, has been completed for that project. The A-plus treatment refers to the advanced purified water work that we have ongoing and in design, and then the final one was pumping water out for land application and ag use, which of course has been completed and gives us much greater flexibility than we had before when we were experiencing the flooding in 2017. So just a couple of pictures here showing the inlet and the ability we had to pump that down and to send the water up to the American Flat Farm site where we were able to significantly draw down the lake overall. When we look at the lake, whoops, when we look at the lake, we have what we call stage storage curves, and this gets back into our school time and looking at the area under the curve and developing the volumes. At the high water mark, it's one lake during 2017, 2018, 2019, we are at that 49.23 and a half on the bottom axis all the way to the right. Taking that up to the curve, it equates to 10,000 acre feet of volume. Our pump location can pump down to 46, 49.16 and about 3/4, and that equates to about 1,800 acre feet. So basically, we have the ability to pump down 82%, 82% of the volume that we saw at the high water mark. Annually, we have been seeing around three feet or more of evaporation when we have the high waters as well. So between, evaporation is one of the highest items. So I just want to set that stage as we move forward then to the request. I want to talk about committed versus actual flow. Under the sewer capacity allocation program, we, when we issue a sewer will serve letter, it's only issued at the time of payment and building permit, and it has to be, they have to pay in full at that point. The actual flow to the Reno Stead Plant, of course, doesn't occur until the building is, until it's built and it's occupied and the water fixtures are being used, and that time between the sewer will serve and occupancy is often 12 to 18 months. So specifically, today, our committed flow is 2,120,000 gallons. The actual flow going to the plant is 1,900,000 gallons. So just saying, we have that time delay. Here's, here's where we are today on our sewer allocation worksheet. As of even yesterday, we had a small improvement coming in for a GameStop tenant improvements that takes us down to just over 5,000 gallons of capacity based on what has been previously approved by council. Also, just a few days ago, we received a application for Copper Mesa. It's a multifamily, 290 affordable housing units. That by itself is 50,000 gallons, just over 50,000 gallons. And so this thing, of course, evolves. Looking at this allocation list above, that was beginning in January 1st, 2021, so this is about, we're 17 months into this list, and we, we have used about 70,000 gallons in that 17 months. But as you can see, certain projects can come in, and that can go quick, much quicker. The sewer allocation worksheet, further, we talk about projects that are initiated but are not to will serve. These are things that could come in based on previous approvals. Obviously, if we do not have sewer capacity, we will not be approving additional work. I just want to kind of show these, the projects sometimes can be on here for multiple years. And then we have future projects that are out there, Evans Ranch, Silver Star PUD, things that have been approved that also would have a lot. That's why we're doing the expansion that we're doing right now, is to prepare for this longer range type of projects. And then, of course, the last item we have is the master plan or zoning. I just want to go back to this one. The reason we're here today is we're asking for a additional allocation. I would recommend that we actually ask for 100,000 gallons to allow for these next two projects that are in the queue and give us a little bit until we can bring back to council the sewer connection fees. We have completed the sewer connection fee report. We need to get the public input back so we can return it back to council and have, and look to get those, get you those comments so you can have that under your considerations for raising sewer connection fees in the future. So that is our ask. We're 5,000 gallons remaining. We've got two projects that would take 72,000. We would like to have 100,000, so we have a little additional to work with in between now and the time that sewer connection fees are, are advanced. And that is my report.
Okay, thank you. That's excellent. Great information. Okay, Councilwoman Breckus. Yeah. Oh, before we start, I'll disclose that my husband is a City of Sparks employee, and he, in his broad chain of command over there, has one person under him who manages the Tom Wharf, which is a plant owned by the City of Reno, City of Sparks, 1/3rd, 2/3rd. And while Mr. Flansburgh didn't mention the words Tom Wharf, I'll just disclose it because the shave actually goes to Tom Wharf. But I am really concerned about, this is a big moment for us, and I'm struggling with confidence that we have the, that we're playing a risky game with the North Valley's residents. And I guess my first question, you know, Mr. Flansburgh, you said we have the ability to pump down 82% of the high water volume. What months are the pumps on?
So in our project, we are pumping to the American Flat Farm, so during irrigation season, April through October is the time that we would be doing the pumping, and so that is when we can actively pump down the lake with, with, with the solution we have in place. The reason that's important is because it allows us to have better regulation of the lake elevation over years. As you recall, in 2017, we didn't have that ability, and 2018, we did not have that ability. So actually, it was approval of this council to put this project in place, which has given us that flexibility to pump down, which has greatly increased the risk, or has decreased the risk and increased our ability to, to have more volume there for large, very large stormwater events.
Yeah, the problem I see with that and why that doesn't tip me over to the ability to be comfortable with this is that, I'll take this off as I speak, is that the problems that we had in flooding in the 1718, 1819 year were outside of that April to October period. So the pumps aren't going to be on if we have an event for you to draw down. Now, say going into October, you can be drawn down, but you can only be drawn down so far, period. So the pumps aren't going to be on if we have an event for you to draw down. Now, say going into October, you can be drawn down, but you can only be drawn down so far, you and I had a conversation on this, and it's, and we can only draw down so far under, you know, some other parameters, and we were further down below than where you would be able to draw down due to the drought conditions in that 17, 18, 18, 19 years. So this pumping does not give me the confidence, if we had an event, which is very focused, like an atmospheric river, that this would save us. And as I sat through the trial, the two issues were, you know, development runoff, of which we have a whole bunch more, you know, because we've grown a lot there. We have some projects, I would think, in some sort of state of development that probably don't have their retentions in but have some, some runoff possibilities because they're partially under construction. And, you know, so there's that, and we've got a lot more hookups. So we got a lot more water, a lot more going through the plant. How much do volume, you said we're at 1.9 right now running through the plant?
We are flowing an average of 1.9 million gallons to the plant.
Okay, that's, and, and what is the true design capacity right now? If you incorporate into the shave?
Two and a half million gallons.
2.5?
2.5.
2.5. So you're at 1.9?
Okay, Councilwoman Breckus, I'm going to send it over.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'll come right back to you.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. A few questions and then a comment on, if we do what you are asking, another 100,000. So how much have we already allocated?
So we have currently allocated the two points, well, 2,120,000 has been committed. So that's the allocation amount.
What I'm trying to calculate, is it 50% of the flow shave with this? It looks like it to me.
So you have authorized 125,000 gallons total.
So if we add this 100, it would be 225, which is about 50% of the 500,000.
That is, that would be correct.
Okay, I wanted to just ask a few questions. So I think what we're doing is we're, my concern is during the winter, when we have the heavy rains, like the 2017, the 2005, the 1997, et cetera, just depends where they go, and making sure that we can draw down. Are you planning a program, like where we have upstream reservoirs on the truckee, they start emptying those reservoirs to make room in the reservoir to hold the water? Do we have a program planned like that?
So we, to date, we are not doing any flow shave at this moment in time because
Today?
Today, we're not and haven't been. When, when the actual, actual flows come to the plant go over 2 million, then we would start to do some flow shaving as needed to make sure that we keep within.
Because we haven't reached the 2 million of the plant.
Right. Because we want to make sure we keep in that. And remember, we're, we're shaving off raw sewage before it's treated.
Right.
So it's not, we're not treating anything through the plant over, over that amount. And then the other thing we have to keep in mind is, one of the other directions we received was to also increase our stormwater retention requirements. So all development that's occurred since then, which has been a fair amount,
Yep.
They've had to build to the 1.3 to one mitigation, not just one to one. And so there, you know, there's, I think there's some other things that, that we have done here that gives me a little more of a comfort level in what we're requesting.
Okay, so thank you. So just a few more questions. On the stormwater that you just mentioned, my next question was going to be, when, when Michael Michelle went out and did the inspection, he found about 40% of the stormwater ponds were out of compliance. Either they weren't built, weren't fenced, weren't maintained, or were built to irregular design, weren't, weren't built as designed. Are we continuing to do the inspections and has he done an inspection, do you know?
Through Development Services, they are continuing doing those inspections.
Okay. Do you think, Mr. Manager, we could get some periodic reports on that? Because that would give me great comfort to know where we are in the inspection program. Because to your point, a portion of the problem at Swan Lake was due to overflowing or malfunctioning stormwater retention systems. And a portion, whatever percentage, some percentage was alleged, and we agreed to settle, that some percentage came from the sewer treatment plant. And the, that's one reason we did the flow shave, right? We want to be able to divert sewage, if there is a wet condition, I think. Is that the general idea?
Yeah.
Okay. I have one more question, so I'll come back when, thank you very much.
If, if I may, just answer one of those. Please remember that even the total volume that we would discharge previously or currently to Swan Lake is in inches, not even a foot or more. So just in terms of volume.
Okay, thanks. Councilman Reese?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Mr. Flansburgh, thank you for the presentation. I suppose that I understand entirely why you're, why you're before us and the need that has arisen. I imagine we all knew that at some point in time, this moment would come because it was the nature of the way the flow shave program was set up and the anticipated gap between what the flow shave could accomplish, what it might mean for various years of inclement weather, and also ultimately what it means for the expansion of the sewer capacity in the North Valleys. So that being the case, one of the concerns I have is that this body has a subcommittee for the North Valleys water issues, and it hasn't met in a little while. So I am prepared to move forward today in support of this particular item, but with the proviso that that body has got to be called back. We've got to get updates into the community, and, and those updates, I think, will be important because it can't simply be that every time a new development comes along, we, we readjust. We need a global evaluation process. And so again, I'm happy to support today, but I think I want to make sure that after we come back from break, that we get up into the North Valleys with that subcommittee and get some updates, not only about the stormwater utility, about the expansion of the plant, the agricultural project. I mean, there is a lot going on in this basin, especially as you start to layer on expansion ideas related to, you know, reservoir, our sewer utility. So there's a lot going on. I just want to make sure that we're being thoughtful about the, the public's opportunity to participate in all of that, too. So again, excellent presentation. Understand entirely what the assignment was. Happy to move forward on that basis.
Thank you. And I would only add that I think it was intentional that, that this was done this way, that we would come back before you. So we could have these discussions and we could say, it's not that we've been, that we haven't done anything. We've done a lot, and that's why I can come forward and make this recommendation. So thank you for that.
Councilwoman Weber?
I just want to second and, and support, it wasn't a motion, so I want to support what our at-large member mentioned about having the, the meeting. And I think it's important that we also invite the City of Reno residents. I know we, we do, but I want to make sure that it's not just county folks that we invite and we make it a point to invite the City of Reno residents out there as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Going on to our second round, Councilwoman Doer filed, followed by Councilwoman Breckus.
Okay. Well, I too, that was, I'm so glad that both of my colleagues brought it up because I am the third person who serves on that committee. And that was my concern is that we were taking an action, and we haven't met in so long with the Swan Lake Committee, that, and they have a certain expectation that we will at least share with them what's going on. So I, I completely support this idea of bringing the Swan Lake Committee back to order and sharing with them the information that I'm asking for now, that I've already asked for. And then also, I want, I think it's important to understand what trajectory we're on with the sewer connection fees. Are we going to be dealing with that in December, or what's approximate timing?
Yeah, thank you.
And you don't even have to answer right now, but if you want to, that's okay.
Well, I, so we, we are at the stage of going out and getting the public input. There were over 500 individuals or companies that had paid sewer connection fees in the last three years. That is the group that we'll be targeting with the, with this information, of course, in addition to making it, you know, available to all the public.
So, but are we thinking in the winter?
It'll likely be, it'll likely be late fall, yes.
Okay. And then the other one was the, I just wanted to mention, and I mentioned this to our manager earlier, but I want to mention publicly, there, there's something, and I have to remind a lot of people over the years, there's something, a state water planner that we focused on called the hydrological cycle, which means when we're in a drought, which we are right now, we're not thinking about flood. We're thinking about how, how, how low things have dropped, and we're not really thinking at all about flooding. And when it's flooding, we're never thinking about drought. And in Nevada, we're either in drought or flood. So we've got two options here. We're never at the average, ever. We, we, I don't think in 50 years of record, we might have been one year at the average, but I've never seen it. So we're, we're either drought or flood. And so what I want to make sure is, even though we've drawn down so far and the pump can't reach out anymore, you know, we're about to run out of daylight with the pump, that we keep in mind that in a minute, this winter, it can change. And that's what I, all I want to do is make sure people are safe so that the stormwater ponds are working, we have an ability to pump out of the lake. And the problem is, the pumping is generally in the summer, right? It's for the agriculture. But when the water comes is in the winter. And so that can shift very quickly, and that's all I want to make sure we're just mindful of that. And, and I will, I am prepared to support today, but as long as we quickly follow with the meeting and we stay on top of it, and the last thing was, where is the water supposed to go? You know, we're working on a reservoir, we're working with Reno Sparks Indian Colony, or sorry, the Pyramid Lake Poyt Tribe, right? I got it wrong, probably.
Reno Sparks Indian.
Reno Sparks Indian Colony on a potential option there. We're working on other options. It would be good at the meeting to get update on that as well. So those are all things in the background. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Breckus?
Yeah, you know, and I was talking. And I did ask in my briefing about the inspection program and where that was. And, you know, without the data, where we're at, the compliance, I'm still not at a comfort level. I want to bring up a couple, a couple other factors is, the basin also takes flows from unincorporated Washoe County. We do not seem to be tracking what's going on in those lands that are also at flooding risk. You know, are, are people putting up, you know, storage buildings? Was there a subdivision within that area? Have there been land divisions? Haven't done that. Also, because we're in such a vulnerable spot of the runoff, what if you have a million square foot industrial building, under construction, all graded out, they've got their, you know, management practices in, but what if they don't have, you know, the true controls that are called for, and they're going to involve some runoff? Because we know we have a lot of construction going on there, and that could come through if that thing isn't buttoned down in a different way. I am just not there, but it looks like the council is, and that's fine. They weren't there in 2017 when I said, let's do a, let's do a moratorium and line out a big path forward to provide a lot of certainty to the development. Because that's the problem. If development doesn't have certainty, you're in a bad place. And I think we're in a bad place because it's a race. It's Hunger Games to get your connections. And I think the proper move by the council at this point in time is to bring back that resolution to allocate all we have left. We're going to have to pick winners and losers. Subsidized housing project, we've got resources in that, that should be a winner. But maybe it's not. Maybe someone sees the GameStop as the winner. We are not going to be able to allocate everyone who's in the queue, who maybe already has some level of entitlement and could get jumped around by someone going straight to building permit. So you're just pushing, kicking the can down the road a little bit in a temporal base, temporal situation, but with everything shown on his chart and him saying you're three years out on opening the doors for the expansion, you're going to have, we're going to have to make that decision on the allocation and put the brakes hard down. When is that date going to come, do you think? Because is, is this your last ask on the flow shave?
Oh, no. I'm sure we'll be back asking again, specifically, once we have connection fees in place, be the time that we would come back and ask for additional volume there. And again, you know, you mentioned about the, I'll call it the burn rate, right? 70,000 gallons in the last 17 months. And yet, now we've got two coming in that are equal, basically equal to that right away. So it's just hard for us to gauge and tell you how fast things are going to come in or when they're going to come in. But this is what we are seeing in front of us, and then we, we went through some of those other projects. So I think, you know, we're three years out for the advanced purified water project, but we haven't, we've, we've used 150,000 gallons, 160,000 gallons in the last three years, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any other council members have any questions or comments?
One more, and under our rules.
That was two rounds.
Yeah, under our rules. You know, I don't understand, I mean, I've been a huge advocate for the missed, you know, fiscal opportunities to hit all that new development for the connection fees that's locked to 2014, you know, dollars. But I don't see that, getting those recalibrated as a relationship to letting more flow shave go forward. So, you know, I, I don't understand that. And I, I would like a response, but I don't want to, because I only have a minute here. You know, if we're three years out, the development community needs some certainty on where we're going before we open up the day. So if we say it's June of 2022, June of 2025, let's figure out how we're going to manage people lined up, because there's a lot lined up. And that resolution needs to come back to the council, and, you know, we need to, we need to revise policy. Because, you know, what's the plan? So what's the plan on the three years managing the, providing certainty for the next three years? And then what's the plan? I don't understand the connection fees and bringing in more flow shave. I don't understand that.
Thank you very much. Any other council members have any questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Madam Vice Mayor, we have none.
Okay, looking for a motion. Have a motion?
One, 100,000 gallons.
And a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries 6-1.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, sending it right back to you. Sorry, it wasn't, my microphone was off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this point, we're moving on to item G1, citizen appointments to boards and commissions. Item G1-1, appointment to the Urban Forestry Commission from Councilmember Doer.
All right, Councilwoman Doer.
Thank you. I would like to reappoint Trish Greif and Sonia Lucatero.
Okay, before you, anyone gives me a motion. Madam Clerk, any public comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have not, we've not received any correspondence, and we have none registered.
Okay, thank you so much. So Councilwoman Doer gave me a motion, and I got a second from Councilwoman Reese. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item G1-2, appointment to the Ward 3 Neighborhood Advisory Board from Councilmember Delgado.
Okay, Councilwoman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to appoint Emmanuel Gutierrez, Maricela Gutierrez Rodriguez, Jennifer Hildebrand, and John O'Moyar to the Ward 3 now.
Fantastic. And before we do that, Madam Clerk, any public comment?
Madam Mayor, we have none registered and have not received any correspondence.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Councilwoman Delgado and a second from Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Good choices. Okay.
Item G1-3, appointment to the Reno Arts and Culture Commission.
Madam Clerk, any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, we have none registered and have not received any correspondence.
Okay, at this time, I would like to appoint Willie Braun. There's my motion.
Sorry.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are on to item G2-1, which is an appointment to the Regional Transportation Commission, RTC. Councilmember Delgado has resigned from his position, and we are seeking a replacement.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Madam Mayor, we have not received any public comment on this item.
Okay, I'm going to send it to Councilwoman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Unfortunately, due to time constraints, I've had to resign from my position on RTC. I've had a great opportunity and I'm really honestly blessed to have been working with such a great team at RTC and also, of course, with my colleagues. Vice Mayor is also the chair, has done a wonderful job leading that organization. As we all know, it's a regional body. And the most important part is being able to work as a region. And so it's a fine line, being able to walk those lines, walking with your colleagues at the City of Sparks and also Washoe County. But we've been able to do some really beautiful and amazing work in terms of infrastructural improvements in our communities. One thing is, as I'm walking away from RTC, is in the middle of the Audi Wells Development, and that's one project that means so much to me. It was a project that was early on, it's taken years to get to where we are right now, but it's going to be the first multimodal project, but also in the heart of Ward 3 and a community that dearly needs and appreciates some infrastructure, especially if we've seen due to the pandemic in terms of through the healthcare lens, opportunities through safe pedestrian opportunities for people to bike, to run, to be able to get to point A and to be able to get to point A and point B without walking on the sides of, uh, of dirt and snow and other things as they try to commute to, uh, to the grocery store, or just to get, get to other means. And so it's really amazing to see some of that work happen. But again, due to time constraints of how to cut my time short, um, on RTC, and I've said my goodbyes, at the last meeting in RTC, so I, at this time, I'd like to give me the opportunity to fill my role and, and make it an appointment. And if, if, if everyone's in, and again, of course, this will go to a vote, but I'd move to, um, if you're open to it, Madam Mayor, appoint you to fill the role of my seat, remain a seat on RTC. I think right now it's, uh, a, 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 a time that we need, um, someone that's going to be able to continue the unification and continue some innovation opportunities and push forward some of these really monumental projects. Uh, and now more than ever is some time to, to get some strong leadership along with our good Vice Mayor there to, to provide that support. So that, that would be a motion.
Thank you, Councilwoman Delgado. That is very kind of you. Very kind.
We have a motion, a second, Madam Mayor, discussion?
Yeah, I honestly, that is very kind, and, um, I think we are really, it, it seems like everything is starting to really change and come together over there. And I know your body works really well with each other, and, um, and so, thank you, Councilwoman Delgado. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and it has been a pleasure. Um, I, uh, need to take an opportunity to speak about my colleague, um, Councilwoman Delgado, and the work that he has done uh, on the RTC board, not just representing Ward Three, which he has done beautifully, by the way, every meeting. He sees things from a lens that is so representative of his ward, and he brings things to the discussion that really make projects that much better. And they're always community-based, they're always, uh, you know, they just come from the heart, but they come from a community that he is very plugged into. And I always value his very thoughtful participation in all boards. Oscar doesn't talk a whole lot, but when he does, he's like, yeah, Futton, you listen? Is that the, is that the right thing?
You don't, and then when you do.
That just said how old I am. How old is that commercial? But he does such a tremendous job, and he, uh, he sees the role at RTC of what it is, which is a regional board. And, uh, under his, um, with his leadership and the RTC's board, I mean, you can point to projects that were done. The Audi Wells is going to be so amazing. I just can't even wait for that to get done. But you look at the Virginia Street Project, which he was equally passionate about. You look at the, uh, Southeast Connector, which he, uh, participated in very much on that. Uh, all the projects, didn't matter which ward it was in, didn't matter even if it was, you know, county-specific. He, uh, understood the value of teamwork and working in that, uh, thought process and understanding that, um, it's not all an individual-based board, it's a regional board. And if you can't get along, you can't get anything done. And frankly, that board has done a tremendous amount, um, in, in moving things forward, and I value your participation, Councilwoman Delgado, very much. Madam Mayor, I am excited to support you in this. I know that your passions for cycling and multimodal and, uh, our, um, ADA community and, um, you know, it's representative of what the construction that's going on downtown right now. And, and you are a leader in every sense. You have been back to DC, you've met with our delegation, you have championed all things Reno for a long time. And I think having you, along with the Mayor of Sparks, along with the Chair of the Washoe County Commission, makes that board a, a powerful board in this time with people that you have solid relationships with. And that cannot be understated when you're fighting for federal dollars to improve our community. So I support, uh, your being on the RTC.
Well, that's very kind, and, um, I'm honestly humbled and, and honored, so, thank you. So I have a motion.
Oh, I'll comment also.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I, um, more than any one project, I think the need over at RTC, and I'll, I'll let people know that I sat on the RTC Citizens Advisory Committee prior to coming to this body ten years ago. And, you know, with my city planning background, have been very versed in transportation prac, policy practice, you know, for decades, going back to 1993, when the first Inner Surface Transportation Efficiency Act was signed, which was a game changer, and, and all federal laws changed from that. That's how deep my background is and my interest in serving on this board. But more so than any one project, which seems to be the focus, is really systematic change over at RTC. One, I think the governance structure is broken. It concentrates too much power in five individuals, two of whom are Washoe County Commissioners and tend to look more at the unincorporated needs of our community and their residents. We had a bicyclist activist today come and talk about, you know, a sidewalk that had a lot of sand and dirt on it. And that's because the emphasis with RTC is on road construction and new projects, and not upon maintenance, which by the way, is the federal leaning, is really, you can't, if you can't maintain the roads, you can't be building them. We're missing out in pu, in very simple operational, um, components in that RTC money needs to flow into our operations budget so they can be sweeping all the sidewalks, sweeping the curb and gutters. They don't have that money. It's a broken system, and that's just one aspect. Madam Mayor, you served on that body for a brief minute in 2015, gave it up. I would have liked the nomination. I also want to call out that we needed someone there to focus on transit. The, the, what happened this last summer and fall of three transit strikes that were unable to be solved here locally, had to be solved back in Washington DC, was a big scar on this region, unfortunate. And if you had seen, as I saw, and spent a lot of time down at the RTC transfer station, of how many vulnerable transit-dependent persons' lives were shaken up by that stoppage and the disinvestment that's gone on, on the transit system, I think you'd have a lot, look at it through different eyes. So I won't support the motion. And thank you for letting me share my thoughts.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll be brief. Um, this is an important board, and I think because of that, we all have some thoughts about it. For my part, I am absolutely thrilled, Madam Mayor, that you'll go on to this board, in large part because it is a regional consensus-building, uh, opportunity, and that's really the key to success. Right? If we are going to have, uh, things that the city of Reno is passionate about and continues to be passionate about, we need to have folks on that board who can be regional partners. And unfortunately, my colleague from Ward One is not that person. Intellectually, no doubt, is by far, uh, the most knowledgeable about these transportation issues. But I think the person on RTC has to carry forward the vision of this body, not any one individual particular preference, especially when those ideas have been soundly and routinely rejected by this body. And so i- it is because of that that I cannot support the Ward One member's desire to be on this board. I, I think also there's this long history that I am beginning to understand about the Ward One member's refusal to disclose the conflicts with the City of Sparks that gives me pause, uh, for believing that our interests would be, uh, carried out there. I mean, I think Sparks has enough help there, so we really don't need additional, uh, help in that regard. And then the last thing I'll say is that there were some strikes that occurred. And I know firsthand, and, and the mayor is never going to take credit for the role that she played in negotiating those, uh, decisions and really moving the ball forward. Some people will, uh, look to grandstand and, and pick up a sign for a day, but it's the person who's at the center of this body who actually was negotiating the resolution of those things behind the scene, was involving both our state and federal delegations, which ultimately resulted in those strikes coming to an end. And so, um, some people look to, you know, grab the limelight and engage in theater. Uh, other people actually do the work, and Madam Mayor, you're one of those people who does the work. And so I'm happy to support you going over the RTC and, and believe that, uh, for a variety of reasons, that will allow us the strongest position we can to do all the things that this body has sought to do, including some of the exciting things with multi, multimodal transportation, micro-mobility, uh, different kinds of flex ride. I mean, RTC is a very important body, and we have two members who have been on it for the last several years who've done an outstanding job of fighting for this region's needs, and we need to keep that going. And so thank you so much, Madam Mayor, for giving me the floor for a minute. Uh, happy to see you moving in that direction.
All right, thank you so much. I really, really appreciate that, and I just want to make it very clear that I will reach out, uh, with anyone. I spend a lot of time, um, talking with the Teamsters, hours and hours and hours, and, um, I, again, like, I think it's really important that all sides work together. And I will continue to try my very best to build, um, consensus on all sides, right? On both sides, um, there were issues that I had really experienced on both sides. Um, but there were some pretty big successes as well. The health insurance was really important, and, um, I'm, you know, grateful for RTC to get there and making that happen. And then the cafeteria-style bidding was really important as well. So, uh, negotiations are sort of give and take. They're not always easy, and it was tough, I'm not going to lie. But we had, um, you know, a lot of really, really hard-working bus drivers that deserve a lot, a lot of credit in a really, really challenging time. And then we also had, you know, some of our poor seniors and people that ride the bus that also couldn't make it to, um, their doctor's appointments. You know, so on both sides, it was really challenging, but I will do my very best to reach out, um, to all sides and work with them. And, and, um, and I don't look at it as, uh, party politics in any, in any capacity. It's about community, not about party. So, um, thank you very much, and I really appreciate, appreciate the kind words, um, from all my council members. It's, uh, you guys have been tremendously supportive, and I couldn't do what I do without your support in every way. So thank you, Councilwoman Delgado, Councilwoman Reese, and Councilwoman Jarden from the bottom of my heart. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moving on to item H1, which is City Council Comments.
All right, any comments?
Madam Mayor, just briefly, I would be remiss not to mention that June is Pride Month. So I'm excited that, uh, June 1 falls on a day where we are in council and can have just a moment to just reflect on, uh, the awesome job that the city has done to be, uh, inclusive in its approach. Uh, being the first openly gay member of this body certainly has given me a first, uh, you know, front row seat to see it. Um, but it's, it's not about me, it's about we. It's also about the history that brought us to this moment because certainly, uh, we stand on the shoulders of those people who came before us. And so it's always a nice opportunity to, uh, reflect, so I'll just say happy pride and, uh, excited for the month ahead.
Councilwoman, um, thank you so much, and I just want to address that, because we celebrate pride in July. Right? We have two prides, and we celebrate it in July. But I really think we need, uh, an event in June, because I have people from all over, visitors that say, why do we do that? So what, what, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, we can celebrate every month of the calendar year, right?
Love it.
Um, but the, the truth is, is that because of the history of pride in this community, there was at one point in time, in a very distant memory, there were two prides. Um, but nationally, uh, in this country, June is Pride Month. And then just by happenstance in our own history locally, uh, we celebrate during July, uh, here. So we'll have a pride parade, of course, and some of that's also related to Art Town. I think you saw the video that Ms. McMillan played today, which I think for the first time really includes and highlights, uh, the pride, uh, element that'll happen about, uh, towards the end of the month. And so, you know, a- again, a- as a reflection of some of the city manager's office efforts at diversity, equity, inclusion, you know, we've, we've done some great trainings. Uh, obviously, we have a hundred percent score in the municipal index from, uh, the Human Rights Commission. Uh, we've had public speakers in the DEI series that have come to talk about, uh, inclusion, and we're getting there, right? And, uh, a lot of that, of course, Madam Mayor, is due to your leadership and thoughtfulness over the years as well. So, uh, thank you, and again, happy pride.
Vice Mayor? And then I'll come to you.
I wanted to say, I think you were the first one that initiated the very first pride parade, correct?
Me?
I think, yes. Wasn't it under your leadership?
No, I think we, no, I think we had them, they were smaller, but what, they, they were keeping them on the side streets, and they weren't really promoting them, they weren't city-sponsored. It was like, you know, it didn't exist. And so I said, well, wait a minute, we need to have it on Virginia Street.
That's what I remember.
We need to support it, and, um, we were the, we did buy the, uh, gay flag first.
Yes, and you were such a huge champion and always have been, and I thought you were the first.
So you guys should all come out and be in our contingent this year if you want to come with us. You would love it. It's a lot of fun. So we're inviting you. Councilwoman Weber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, um, share, and I don't know if council members know, or even some of the folks in the audience, we have a pilot, a pilot neighborhood watch program, um, with Reno Police Department being involved and active, um, at Alice Smith School on June 9th. And we've, it, it's for Ward Four, but everyone's welcome to come, because we need that neighborhood watch program to work with our police department and, um, so that it gets out in our neighborhoods. I know currently, a lot of folks use the, the online program, nextdoor.com and that sort of thing. But we want to do an in-person meeting to give folks the knowledge and, you know, what you can do with your neighbors.
Yeah, well, and some people don't have online access, right? Some people still don't have on, online access. I know we all are fortunate, but there are some people that, that don't.
You're exactly right, and they are going to make it go together, and we're working with Washoe County, uh, I'm sorry, Washoe County, um, Sheriff's Department, and they have a coordinator, and I, some of you may know Teresa Akila, Akia. Um, and so anyway, she's going to come to this program as well, and I'm really excited about it. It's something I've worked on for a while to get us back active.
So once it's up and going, give us the recipe, and then we can implement it on the other ones.
Exactly, and that's what I think the, the RPD wants to do, so.
I love that.
Thanks so much.
Good job. Word for, love it. All right, anything else? No? All right, give me a motion.
Oh, nope, sorry, hold on. Public comment. Sorry, 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 sorry.
Back to you, Madam Clerk, go ahead, sorry.
Uh, so we're on item J1, which is closing public comment. I have none registered. However, we did receive two comments, which were either general in nature or after 4:00 PM yesterday on the 31st. One was in favor and one letter was in concern, and now, your favorite motion of the day.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, I just want to know, what would happen if we did not make that motion, and I made everyone stay?
Let's try next time.
We could try.
Let's see what happens.
Anyway, thank you so much, everyone, for being here and for joining us online. And for you guys, thank you. I'm impressed you stayed the entire time. Most people never make it through the entire meeting. You did a fantastic job. Give them a round of applause. You guys want to get a picture? Okay, let's do it.
And lots of you have, uh, Sage Ridge debate swag on. Tell me, uh, who's on the debate team? And what are your events? Who's going to Louisville? Anybody going to Louisville this year? No? Where's Coach Sloyem?
Did you know Councilwoman Reese's children, well, children?
We had a long history. I was the debate coach at McLean High School for about 10 years, and all of our kids did policy debate, but my...
Did you have school sweatshirts just like us?
Not quite that nice, but we were at a public school, so. I'll, I'll ask you what your events are when we're down there with the photo.
Okay, yes, come on, Weber.
Can you use my camera rather than hers?
Use yours over hers, as I said.
Because I have a better camera.
Are you sure?
Do you want photos of the other?
No, please. Okay. All right, one, one. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
One, two, three. Now I'm going to do one with mine. I know, right? All right, one, two, three.